It being seven o'clock, I'll call to order the meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education. It's Wednesday, July 18th, 2018. We're at the Oregon High School Innovation Center. Ms. Frye, Ms. Fries, look at that. I'm going way back. Ms. Heights, would you please call the rule?
Ms. Feeny?
Here.
Ms. Oderico? Ms. Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Pankrats?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Mr. Lebrun?
Here.
Mr. Zach?
Present. The board has a quorum. As a preliminary matter, Courtney Oderico had indicated she was coming tonight and as Chair of the Growth Committee wanted to be here tonight. She's had a serious health issue in her family that caused her to fly to Florida. And so she's available by telephone and would like to participate by telephone, both in terms of discussion and listening and also to vote on this as a primary member of the task force. I've had conversations with Gina today regarding whether that's permissible under Wisconsin Open Meetings Law. And so Gina, if you could kind of summarize what you advised me today.
Certainly. So nothing under the law prohibits that. I did check with WASB about it also, just to make sure I hadn't missed anything. And what we talked about is that they suggested if it's something we want to do for these types of circumstances in the future, that we could certainly do so tonight and then we might want to consider amending our policies to reflect that. And so Steve did ask me to put that on a list to talk with Ms. Flanagan about.
So given that information, my inclination would be to permit Courtney to attend by telephone and to vote by telephone. But it's essentially a board issue, so I think I would phrase it this way. Does anybody have any objection to that occurring? Courtney's got, I sent her the packet, so she's had the packet and the other information that we're going to review tonight, so she'll be fully up to date on stuff. So, okay, that being the case, I will give her a call. And I had written her number down somewhere. There it is. So I just hit nine.
Yep, nine, one.
And a silent interlude for us. We should start every meeting like this. Yes. Well, that's interesting. Redial? No, that's not right.
That's John Tanner.
We got to nine, four. Dial.
There you go.
This magic is hitting the dial button. Go figure that. Impressed, aren't you, Nathan?
Always.
Yeah. Hi Courtney, it's Steve.
Hi Steve.
You're live and on air.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. And we've discussed prior to you getting on, the ability of board members to participate by teleconference in circumstances like this, which is permitted under Wisconsin law, or at least not prohibited. And there's been no objection from the board from you participating and voting with respect to the items tonight, okay?
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anytime you have any questions, just pipe in, okay? Otherwise, we'll assume you're there. Dan's not here tonight. I know when we set up the meeting that he had indicated that this was a good night for him, and I've not heard from him otherwise. So I think we proceed, having been noticed. All right. I have noticed that the board has been, or documents that have indicated that the board has been appropriately noticed under Wisconsin Open Meetings Law. The agenda contains a consent calendar item approval payments, which we didn't have vouchers on the, in the materials last week, so we thought that it would be wise to formally approve those this evening. And then the resolutions that we're going to need to do relative to the referendum issues that we've been discussing for the last year or so. So I need a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
So.
Ms. Flanagan with the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pankrats with the second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Courtney?
Yep, aye.
We have approval agenda by unanimous voice vote. No presidents address tonight. First item on the agenda is the consent calendar approval of payments. Do I have a motion to approve those items? That item?
So move.
Mr. Lebrun with the motion to approve payments?
Second.
I got Mr. Pankrats with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries.
Yes, aye.
The proposed motion carries by unanimous voice vote. Item B on the agenda is communication from the public. Board Policy 18004 has established the opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. Is there any member that's registered with you, Ms. Heights? Anyone in the public present? I don't see anybody. So we'll move to Agenda Item C1. This is a general discussion regarding authorizing general obligation bonds. I think the way we'll proceed with that is we have some new information for you and we're going to walk through with Brian and Andy, the information that we've got and see if there's any questions or clarifications that are needed relative to those. So Brian, I'm going to start with you, the pre-referendum budget summary that we've got. We had that last time and had discussed several items, but this has been changed. So if you would walk through this with the board.
Sure. There are three items that Andy and/or I will walk through. None of these three require your approval. Your approval will be directed under the Quarles and Brady Resolutions. So the first item, if you're following along electronically, it is the page right behind our board report. At the top, it says pre-referendum budget summary. You'll notice the costs that have been removed from this budget summary include the solar panels and outdoor education classrooms. So that has been removed per our last conversation. You'll notice the new K6 school. That totals, that summary totals $34.3 million. A question that was raised at the last meeting, what's the marginal cost for us going to a net zero building? If you look at the second item under the new K6 school, it says solar panel. Third item is geothermal, and the fourth item is battery storage. If you add those up, it's roughly $2.2 million. And then go to the line below that, under the comments section, where it says premium for net zero is 1.2 to 1.5. If you didn't do, if we didn't proceed with a net zero engineered design, that would reduce, that would reduce our 33.3 by 2.2 million dollars, and then we'd need to add in the 1.5 million dollars. So I trust that makes sense, the marginal cost, so to speak, is the difference between the 2.2 and the 1.5, which is roughly $700,000. Secondly, we've separated the safety and security. Andy talked about that last time, and that safety and security related to clock systems throughout the schools. And then another item that I have for you, just to give you a really quick briefing, when you look under total owner's soft cost, and it says rounded, it's $10.4 million. We have a summary sheet that contains about 20 different items of that $10.4 million. The term "soft" cost can be interpreted as non-brick-and-mortar-related costs. The big categories there include architectural and engineering, design fees, insurance, survey soils and geo-test boring. We have a budget for land acquisition and recall. We're going to be purchasing multiple sites and also a site for a potential 6-8 element, or 6-8 middle school. We have some utility extension expenses. We also have geothermal test boring and design services. Another large item is fixtures, furniture fixtures and equipment, along with technology. That's making sure that once the school is open, we have the appropriate technology for our students, as well as desks, chairs, all of that non-construction items. And we also have an owner's contingency built in. I guess we could make an argument of putting the owner's contingency in the construction cost, but we typically broke that out and then reallocated it once we, A, if we don't spend the contingency, or if there is a bid and a subsequent alternate bid that we need to look at. So that totals, that, oh, and along with our, that totals our $10.4 million. So I'll stop with that and see if you have any questions related to the overall budget that we've been working on with Fendorf and Bray.
One of the concerns I had was with the phrase "soft," that somehow that would imply to the district voters that that was sort of a fudge factor, or you know, kind of extra money that really wasn't needed. But in fact, if you look at this, those are actual expenses that will be, that will have to pay, other than the owner's contingency, and that's a safeguard. But these are actual expenditures that will have to occur with result of this. Tim?
And again, at least for now, there's an allocation for land in there, not any specific dollar amount. There's an allocation for land because we're still talking with folks.
Correct. We have the one major land purchase budget, and we'll have to break that down as we narrow in on our potential land properties.
And just I get from this, Brian, is that this is the worst-case scenario in terms of costs, and that there's a potential that that number would come down.
Absolutely. Of course, it's before bid date, and if everything goes well, bid date is in that, I think we're going to break it into two different bid packages, but starting in February, and then another bid package in early March, April. So a way to look at this is, this is the top-end cost, and you'll notice when you get to the action portion of the agenda with the referendum resolutions, we have the maximum borrowing amount at $44.9 million, which matches the maximum budget that we have put together so far. And of course, Andy will say this, I'm not trying to beat him to this, but if we were to spend $43 million, we would then refund, we can pay off debt earlier with any surplus monies that we have. I'm not anticipating that, but in the event, that's sort of the safeguard protecting the process.
Just a question. Courtney, are you hearing us okay?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. And I should note, and we'll have this noted in the minutes, that Courtney's on speakerphone and that's being broadcast publicly, and she's hearing us for purposes of making a record regarding the teleconference. Okay. Any other questions on the pre-referendum budget summary that we've got regarding the $44,900,000 figure? Troy?
Yeah, so the big number there, the 32 million, I assume that that's based on a square foot cost of preliminary conceptual designs. How much, I mean, and you mentioned the bidding process, and how much of this project would be bid? I understand Fendorf is helping us with the design at this point, but how much of that project is actually going to be bid out?
So what we've done, and what's been our process, is basically, everything's bid in the construction package for the most part, except for the general conditions and those types of things, which Fendorf manages. But all the different trades are bid out. Fendorf even bids on the project. They typically give me their bid a few days before the bid is actually due, and I hold that in a sealed envelope until bid day. I state that right, Matt?
Couple days, day before. It's a lot to pull together, but yes, that's right. Process is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question as well. Because a couple of people have asked me, no offense, Matt, have we bid out the general contracting?
No, we haven't.
When was the last time we looked at other general contractors? And Fendorf has done a great job. I don't debate that at all, but I've been asked by a number of people that very question.
So I think we interviewed sometime in like 2011, something around there, 2000, because the referendum was in 2012, so 2010, 11, something in that range. I have a file on it, but not available right here.
Yeah, Tim, just to underscore that a little bit, with the last, with the last major construction project, we bid out and conducted interviews. And actually, members of the school board were on the interview panel and process, and Andy and I didn't select Fendorf. The school board members that were on the interview process selected Fendorf and then brought that to the board for a recommendation. We saw some value in, first of all, the success of our $54.6 million referendum and had a conversation with them. We have an exceedingly competitive price on our GMP. I'm not sure if you know what a GMP is, and that might take a long time to, it's our guaranteed maximum price. One of the other benefits we have in our pricing, and I would just add a portion to Troy's comment, because Fendorf does so many school projects, our project is modeled after two elementary schools in Sun Prairie that were recently done. So we feel we have really accurate construction estimates, or you know, pre-bid estimates at this time. But I know you have another question.
Yeah, just to follow up, we did select Fendorf way back, went through that process, and then went through the last building project, and I think the board, before you got on, made a conscious decision that, you know, we would continue with that relationship and as a general contractor through this one, along with Bray, just because of the cost-effectiveness that we saw related to the construction of the $55 million projects and then moving forward with that relationship. I know the, all the administrators who worked with that team were very impressed with what happened. So it was a conscious decision, but we haven't gone out and interviewed for this project and bid for them. But it's a fair question. Okay. Okay. Any other questions on that sheet? Then that would take us to the next sheet, which would be the override question, which would outline the operational cost for the new building, because we would need a second question, which would be to override the revenue limits for purposes of operating that. And as Brian has indicated, that's something Andy's been working on for the last several months, and the tricky part of that is not only to identify those expenses, but then to factor in additional revenue that we would get from the growth, so that we get a number that is really going to be needed to operate that building separate from the additional growth revenue. So Andy, the floor is yours to walk us through that document.
Thanks, Steve. So apologize for spreadsheets, but that's kind of my world, so here we go. If you look at the spreadsheet titled "New Elementary School Override Question," the first thing we had to do is identify that, you know, it's a brand-new school. It's not like Rome Corners, and at Rome Corners, we were moving grades to that building that exists in, at the time, in elementary and middle school. So we were bringing more staff at Rome Corners than we'll be bringing for this new building. So what that meant was, we had to kind of look at all the different positions that we will need in the building, and we, as Dr. Busler said last time, we needed to kind of replicate the same standards that we had. So we tried to identify that in all those different positions. The first thing we did, though, is said, how many positions can we relocate from existing buildings for teachers? So you see that we identified that we would have three sections. This is our intent, to open the school at three sections for seven different grade levels, kindergarten through sixth grade. So that's how we get to the 21 teachers at the top. And then we felt that, in looking at how many students were coming from existing sections, that we could subtract off 11 sections, and 11 teachers would actually be moved to the new school, leaving basically 10 additional teachers to kind of start the school out. So we came up with just under three-quarters of a million dollars to add the teaching staff to that building above what we had to relocate. And then we identified all the different positions associated with the new school and added those up. You can kind of not disregard the health insurance information to the left unless that interests you, but we tried to anticipate how many people take health insurance and take dental insurance, and then how much, how many people take family dental. That's generally what that is. The bottom of the page, then we get to about a $2.9 million allocation, which we then take to the next page. First, are there any questions with that? Anybody see anything you want to talk about there? Yep.
I assume that the 421 students, that number is derived from rolling up the number of students that currently are in the district that would be at the K6 building, and then adding the anticipated growth, or guessing what the growth would be?
Yeah, that actually comes from one of our spreadsheets that we talked about early on. It was kind of the one that had the different models, and we took that number right from the model that we picked here, which was the K6 elementary school. So that includes, yes, kids that are being reallocated from Oregon and Pittsburgh that currently go to Oregon, as well as some new growth.
And the reallocation, then, of teachers is to relieve the student population pressure at our elementary schools.
And Rome Corners.
And Rome Corners, those numbers would be reduced and move to the new building, which would then, the teachers would move along with those kids.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
That's the only question I had. Anybody else? Krista?
I just have one question. So this would be, I guess I'm trying to understand in terms of it's going to be a K5, and then we go to a K6, right?
K6.
K6, and then we go to K5. So does this reflect that or not?
It reflects starting at a K6.
Okay.
Yep. So then the next page, we'll get into that if you, is as, we kind of tried to look at, okay, what's going to happen from our student enrollment from now, okay, 2018 to 2020, 21, when we are going to open the school? And we identified just kind of a, hey, this is a good fact to have, that anticipating about 600 new students just in those essentially two years from now. So that's just kind of a number to kind of keep in our head more than anything. Then we tried to say, because our five-year plan, our financial plan, was based on that. And we looked back in February at what our anticipated revenue streams were, and so these numbers on the three-year rolling average that you see there are coming right from that plan that we looked at back in February. So we anticipated about $2 million in additional revenue, just in 2019, 20, based on that, having that 600 kids kind of spread out, and we had to take a percentage of those. Now, we felt like that, it might be a little foolhardy to anticipate all of those kids. That feels really aggressive, even though we do believe in Roffer's numbers. So we decided that, let's just use 70% of that, just as a good factor. So we kind of took off $600,000 aside, and then we said, okay, we've got $1.4 million in 2019, 2020. Let's take and say we're going to save in that particular year a half million dollars and put that aside. And then that would leave about $900,000 that year. Again, this is all projections, but we got to, we got to start someplace. That would leave $900,000 for current operations that particular year. So that's the year after this, next year that we're starting right now.
What does that mean, "save"?
It means we would not spend. We wouldn't have to levy if you didn't want to, or we could levy. It's totally, it's basically not utilize those funds from our revenue limit. Does that make sense? Because what we're trying to do here is, some of these new students are associated with operating that new building. So we're taking that money and not going to spend that money in the year that it's allocated to us, because we're going to use it in the year that we open the new school. Okay? So then we go to the next year, 2020, 21, same process. If you look at the anticipated revenue that year from our February five-year plans, 2.8 million. Use the 70% allocation rule, we get down to just under $2 million. That saves $700,000. Again, that three-year average is starting to kick in a little bit. If you are familiar with the revenue limit, there's a three-year average as new students come on. It takes a little while for that to have the larger, large impact. It's kind of slow. And then we would save that $700,000, so we'd have basically $1.26 million for operations that year. Again, we anticipate student growth happening a little bit faster there, so we may need some new teachers that year, so that $1.26 million should help us there. And then we've basically saved $1.2 million over those two years in annual operating funds in order to discount that $2.9 million, this is the next section on the spreadsheet, to $1.78 million. Everybody see where I'm at? All right. Now then, and this is the tricky part a little bit, we add the $400,000 in the current override back in to get to the referendum question at $2.1 million. But when we're doing estimates on impact, we're not including that $400,000. So, because that's already built into our levy rate. So that's a little tricky, that, hey, we talk about, we only need $1.7 million to run the new school, but we're actually going to an override of 2.1, because we're melding those two concepts into one, because we have to, the state only allows us to do two questions now, as of this last budget year. So that gets us to the $2.1 million. But then when we go to tax levy impact, and this is a little old, because we got a new spreadsheet yesterday on the PMA component, but the 69 cents is still accurate. We basically look at about a 69-cent impact, assuming EAV growth, which is consistent with our model here, at 4%, 4%, and then 2% over the next three years. So you have a 69 cent per thousand impact for that $1.7 million. It will be the total impact, just that $400,000 is already in the levy rate. Does that make sense to everybody? That's a little tricky, and it'll take a little convincing, or we'll have to just simplify that when we're explaining it to people. And then the PMA projected impact model, that 1B that we talked about before, is the 67 cents. Now, the model that's in front of you today is actually down to 65 cents. We structured the bonds a little bit differently. We basically are going to issue them right away and start levying right away. If you remember Michelle's model before, she was going to wait to levy them for another year before we did that. Since we're going to need, we're actually starting to spend money now to, in preparation of building the school, the sooner we can sell the bonds, probably the better.
And just for the board's identification, we've not made a decision on which of the PMA options.
Right.
That we're going to utilize. Andy picked the middle one. It's in between those. This is the one that amortizes the principal payments heavier at the end rather than the beginning to anticipate growth, which results in, over the long-term, a higher interest-rate payment than Option 1A, which spreads it out equally. And we need to talk about which one, but for purposes of tonight's discussion and reflecting the tax levy impact, we chose the middle of the three that PMA had. But that will be a conversation that we'll have in the next few weeks, I think, and Brian and I have got to talk about maybe doing a morning meeting to pick that out, you know, if we want to do that. So. Barb?
So, the additional revenue projection, that is the additional per pupil revenue from the state, or is that additional tax-based revenue?
It is, oh boy, it is tax-based revenue. It's not, it actually is not anticipating any additional funding from the state of Wisconsin at this point in time.
If the state were to provide, what was this year's, close to 200?
Yeah, it was.
200 in 2004?
Yep.
That would be over and above.
And what the state's been doing over the last several years is they've been giving the categorical aid, so it doesn't go on the levy at all. So the impact should be similar. If they continue to do that, the revenue would be increased from what these numbers are.
You know, I think the intent, Andy, was to try to throw, try to get this as close as possible in recognizing that, you know, we don't want to underfund this on the operational thing and end up operating the building. It could be that growth outpaces this and, you know, we may not need the total override and then the board would have a decision at that time whether to levy in any given year up to the maximum amount, right?
Absolutely. That's something that some school districts have done, just a matter of course, that they'll do an override and then just kind of live within that. And then they know that they have some flexibility there down the road if they want to use it.
Just a couple of quick comments. I asked Andy to put the row numbers and the column numbers, not so that we could play battleship, but so that we could easily direct you to certain parts of the spreadsheet. And if I'm sitting in your shoes, thinking, where's the risk associated with this model? Because we had to create a model to determine what the costs, what the costs are. And if we looked at maximum, maximum cost with the least amount of risk, we'd say the recurring referendum should be $2.9 million. That's row 35. Everybody with me on that? But we also said, that's really not realistic to say that every cost has to come from the recurring referendum, because we know additional students are projected to come into the district. So the risk portion is row 41 and row 42. And after Andy, Leslie and Gina and a team of us put this together, we started to challenge our assumptions, so that you have confidence in the projection that Andy has in front of you tonight. We looked at what's a realistic allocation model. Again, if we said, we got to cover the 2.9, we're not going to take any risk with growth, we'd be asking for 2.9. We thought a 70% allocation model is realistic. It fits within where we anticipate growth. It also, remember the recurring referendum, the board isn't required to levy up to the recurring referendum. So if our, if our growth rate is faster, we'd need access to less money. The other risk piece that we have over the next two years is not spending part of that revenue cap when, I can guarantee you, next April, when you get a staffing report, there's likely not going to be enough money to do all the staffing requests that come in. That's just a piece of risk. I've had experience in another district where the district held back some money during growth and was able to pay for a significant portion of the additional costs of adding a school. That is just a challenge that we have. When we add a school, we have more costs. I think our projection is reasonable. I think it makes sense when we're sharing with community members, we didn't ask for all the money, that we, for all the money for every cost, because we're going to grow over time. And that's lines 46 through 51 really summarize where we're at. We intend to spend 2.9 million, but we intend to get 1.2 of that out of growth for the next two years. And then add in, as Andy mentioned, the $400,000 maintenance request, which is baked into all of us that pay taxes in the Oregon School District. That's already there. And we didn't want to raise that, even though I think you could make an argument for raising that, just from a consumer price index standpoint. We thought it's super confusing to try to raise it, so we're just going to leave it at 400,000. But this gives future boards flexibility, that if these are conservative estimates, that there may be room for us, for future boards to play and not levy up to the limit of the override. But that, that's not for us to decide and depends on factors as we move forward. I can tell you that, you know, I've been bugging Brian for the last month about when we're going to get the cost override numbers is my MO.
Okay, it's two months.
Okay, two months. And I stopped in and talked to Andy about another issue. I just know they've been working really, really hard on this to pin down variables and to double and triple check the numbers, because it is some amount of making assumptions about variables. And so I think we, I'm glad we spent the time for them to go through that, to bring us a number that they're comfortable with for this, for this particular question. Courtney, if you're still there, do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
The question is that, under that override authority, do we have the ability, can you levy different amounts in different test years? Or once you, like, once you levy a certain amount of it, are you committed to always levying that certain amount? In other words, you know, can you levy the whole 1.7 million one year and 1.5 the next?
Absolutely.
Yep.
So you can change it?
Yep, so it's flexible from tax year to tax year.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Yep. So any other questions on the information we went through?
Nope. I'm following on my digital.
Well, you didn't see that Katie just dumped her water, so, you know, for those that are on TV, that's, yeah, and Krista didn't melt. So we're surviving so far. But it's a little warm in the room tonight, you know, and Andy's working on it, so.
It's a cost-saving technique.
That's right. Okay. Good. All right, let's, sorry, I took us off track.
I do have one more question, if I can. So on the override here, I guess it just felt like I understood it, but questions come up. So the 1.2 million that we're saving in those first two cycles there, that comes back to us in year 21, 22. But is that not just a one-time savings? So how is it that we go from 2.9 million to 1.7 million indefinitely or for the 20-year?
It is actually an ongoing revenue stream that we would get. So it is not, it's one time in that we're not going to spend it, but it's a continuing revenue stream that we're saying we're not going to use until 2021.
So for example, in 2019, we would have revenue of $500,000 that we've attributed to additional growth, and we would not allocate that into budget to ongoing budget items. So that remains a placeholder for the next year. The next year, we get another $700,000 of additional growth. Again, we're not going to allocate that for ongoing spending. So when the building opens, we're going to have a million two in open budget items that we just plunk into fund the expenses for that building.
We did something similar in the last school year, this was last budget year, when we were looking to fund the teacher compensation plan fully this year, we needed to save some money. So last year, we decided to fund one-time expenditures with that money. But then those one-time expenditures, obviously, were done at the end of this 18-19, I'm sorry, 17-18. And so those funds now are available for those ongoing expenses. We could do something similar in those years, or we could just not levy it. It would totally be up to the board. If you don't levy it, I will give you one caution. If you don't levy it, the year that you do levy, that 1.2 million, people are going to feel that, it's just going to be a larger impact that year.
So what we've done is typically utilize it for either one-time expenditures or put it into fund balance. And by putting into fund balance, it helps us sometimes with our bond rating.
Yep, absolutely.
And our cash flow. As our budget continues to grow, the fund balance needs to, you know, increase so that we don't have to long-term, or short-term borrow. Okay, that makes sense. I had a quote, that's, I had that aha moment too, you know, about 10 minutes ago, when I said, what's the savings? And he, and I said, okay, yeah, that's what we're doing.
It's really based on that allocation rate that you set up there, that 70%. It's going to tie back to that.
And to play ahead.
Yep.
To play ahead just a little bit for the board, a future decision, based on what, again, assuming the referendum passes and there's a bond sale in December, assuming on what our rating is, based on our cash, our cash flow balance, you may make a determination that you place that money in fund balance for those, for those two years. You still levy for it, you place it in fund balance, you build up fund balance by another 1.2 million because, as opposed to spending it on one-time items. And then in the Phase Two referendum, you've already bolstered your Moody's rating likely four or five years down the road. But again, that's not a tonight choice. That's a choice that Andy will bring as we process through the 18-19 budget.
So Troy, I had a similar question, because it seems like we're saving, we're pooling dollars that we didn't spend to allocate those against annual operating costs in one year. And once you've spent those unallocated costs, don't the operating costs go back to 2.9 million? That, is that your question?
No, go ahead, Andy.
No problem. So in line 46, we recognize that it costs $2.9 million to operate that new building. And in line 47, we're going to allocate $1.2 million that we didn't spend over the next two years that we just put in a savings account.
Savings account is the thing that's throwing, I think. We're just, it's an ongoing revenue stream. It's associated with new students that have come here. So it's, yeah, it's the 1.2 million that we didn't spend, but it's actually $500,000 that's in our revenue stream the first year that we're talking here, and 700,000 the second year, that we could have spent on something else if it was one-time in nature, and then it frees those dollars up and continues.
We continue to get the money attributed to those students every year, not just in 1920 and 18, 1920 and 2021. We continue to get that. In 1920, we're not going to spend it, because we don't have a building. And then 2021, we're not going to spend it. But we're going to have that line available to us, because we get that revenue still. So in the year that we open the school, we still get that revenue in that year. It doesn't dry up in 1920 and 2021. We still get that in the succeeding years. And then we, because we have not allocated it to spending, you know, on a go-forward basis, we can pick up that revenue then as a corresponding expense for operating the school.
It actually does both. I mean, it would be, if you don't spend that money, it's there, but it's also the constant budget capacity within the budget that's also there. It's both things.
So in 2022, which isn't represented here, the operating cost for that building is going to be $2.9 million?
Probably a little bit more with cost.
Probably. All else being equal, it's $2.9 million.
Yep.
Okay.
And that 1.2 million is going to be directed toward that to discount it on an ongoing basis.
But it would seem that we would have $2.9 million of expenses.
We would.
Okay. So I'm sorry, I'm not.
No, that's okay. I'm not explaining it well. So maybe, maybe the error in how I'm showing this is I'm saying less savings. Savings kind of connotates one-time money, right? Maybe that's the wrong term. Maybe it should have said budget capacity, or 1.2 million and annual budget capacity will be directed toward that $2.9 million to reduce the amount that we need in the override question to the 1.7. Does that help a little bit better or a little bit more?
It helps a little bit better. I'll take it up.
Okay.
Just so I can.
Yeah.
I'm almost there.
Okay.
But I'm still a little bit with Troy on that. We had 1.2 million that we're not going to have once we open. It doesn't seem like we're going to have that.
We'll still have it. It'll still be in the revenue stream.
It's always going to be there, because we have the students. So we get 1.2 million every, well, we get 500 of it the first year. Then in the second year, we get another 700 because of more kids that year, which brings it to 1.2. We'll have 1.2 the next year, 1.2 the next year, 1.2 the next year, attributed that. We just won't have spent the 1.2 first or the second year, the five, because we don't have anything to spend it on. But we're not going to allocate that money to ongoing expenses, because we need to save that revenue for when it opens. So what we're going to do with that money is up to the board at that point in time, whether we under-levy for that year or put it to fund balance or spend it on one time. But we're always going to have that money. Yeah, I did the same thing back when the first, it's tricky.
And the word savings was probably the wrong word, so I kind of took everybody off. Yep.
We have that, we have that revenue capacity starting year one, but not the expense. And we'll have that capacity ongoing. But then we add the expense. And what you don't want to do is fill that capacity in year one and two with ongoing revenues, because when the expense hits, now you've got to either cut or.
Or you should have, you should have done the override for the 2.9 at that point.
Yeah, it's.
Steve, I have a question.
Yep.
Relative to the same discussion, Andy, that's all based on a three-year rolling average. Can that potentially change moving forward from like 21, 22, 23, 24?
It should. Again, these are all based on projections and that's why we're using that 70% number to kind of say, hey, if 70% of that projection doesn't come, we're still okay. But yep, it should continue to come for years as the new students come. And this is, this is different than what we've had in the past. We haven't had that kind of growth, so we're going to be experiencing something very different.
What's keeping us from making the PMA choice? Why are we delaying that? Is there, is there something still coming in the next two weeks that will say, okay, now we're ready to decide how we're going to?
Well, the practical question tonight is it's not on the agenda. So that's, that's a real easy legal one, right, Gina? But, but they've been, they've been still working on and finalizing those numbers. And so we've got one estimate that, on the B1, that would drop us four cents.
I was wrong, it was only two cents. 69, it's actually 67.
It cost us two cents already tonight, Andy. Inflation.
That's why I'm so anxious to make the decision. Rate rates are only going up and.
But we can't sell till we pass the referendum, so. I mean, the earliest we go out is probably January, right?
Yeah, that might even be aggressive and, you know, also, January's kind of a slow month, I think, so maybe February would be where we'd want to be.
But, you know, if the referendum passes, then we're going to have to go right away. So there isn't, for determining the tax impact for voters' information, I think we need to make that decision. For purposes of selling the security, we don't, but.
The other thing that, assuming the referendum would pass, what we would do then is, similar to what we did with the education, educator compensation referendum, we actually passed two levies in October, so that we have the authority to do, to issue the bonds and have the revenue stream for that. If the referendum wouldn't pass, then we would use the other referent, the other amount.
So what we'll be talking about at the conclusion of the meeting, assuming that we get affirmative votes for the resolutions and the, and the language approving the referendum, is to talk about a real short meeting where we would look at the options from PMA and get some insight of Andy when they might be finalized. and get some insight of Andy when they might be finalized so that we could make that determination. Because we're going to need it for our promotional material or educational material. Let me put it that way. That's better, right Gina? It's educational, not, not promotional. Yeah. And we, we're, that's a reminder that we ought to get out to the board members, assuming everything passes. A do's and don'ts in terms of, we did that with the last one, is what we can do as board members. So.
We've got it already.
Good. Okay. Really good questions, everybody. Courtney, you still there? And any questions?
I'm still here and no questions.
Okay. Anybody else have any discussions on the new information tonight? Everybody ready to proceed with the meat of the agenda then? Okay, up to this point, we've got consensus from the board, but not a formal vote that we believe we need to build to resolve the growth issues that are before the district. That we are best served by opening that school in 2020, which means going to referendum this November. And therefore, we would need to pass the appropriate resolutions by August of this year. And then we've decided by consensus that a K6 building would be the building preference for us in the first phase. With then the second phase down the road would be to build a 68 building and converting the K6 building to a K5 building. So everybody's still on board with that concept. Anybody object to that? Okay, now we've added another layer of information onto that consensus, which would bring us to consideration of questions to authorizing general obligation bonds to exceed the revenue limit and to provide for a referendum election on both of those. And then we carried over from the last meeting, a resolution for reimbursement of expenditures. So those would be the four that are before us. Okay? So I'm going to take those in order. And if you turn to the materials, what we're looking for is the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $44,000, $44,900,000. Okay, everybody understand what we're looking at right now for this question? Okay, that would mean to, that we're going to authorize to go out and, and onto the market to get bonds. So what I would do is, I think, take a motion to approve that resolution and a second and have discussion. I think it would be appropriate at that point in time to go around and let board members comment at that time. Which typically what we've done for referendums is given the, the, the board members an opportunity to kind of state their position and how they feel about it and what drove them to their decision. It's a big decision for a board member to make to go out to the public for this amount of money. So I think it's important for us to put on the record kind of where we're at as a board in that regard. Does that sound like a good process? And then that we wouldn't need to repeat that process, assuming we're, we're going that way. I think two, three, and four follow in line. So first one, I would think that we would do that, that general, general comment period. Okay, that being said, the consideration is whether to move to approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $44,900,000. And that would be subject to the language that's in your packet. And as Krista and I noted, we get to sign this. So, which is not insignificant. So is there a motion to approve that initial resolution? Okay, Ms. Flanagan with the motion to approve that. Is there a second? Ms. Feeney with a second. Okay, and the motion is to approve the initial resolution authorizing the general obligation bonds in the amount to not exceed that first item. We all set? Okay, so I'm going to go around and now ask for people's comments on the issue before us. We've been working on this for two years. Barb?
I would just say that I feel it's been a very thorough and careful process. And it's important to recognize that this does impose additional taxes. But it appears that, in my view, it's necessary to maintain the current level of quality of education that we have here in the Oregon School District.
Tim?
I certainly agree with Barb that we've taken a lot of time to understand the building blocks that have taken us to this point. In terms of what our capacities are, in terms of what our projections are around student population, in terms of what's going on, particularly north, in the north end of our district. I know it seems, we, we're just finishing spending a fair amount of money on some well-spent projects, I might add. I'm very proud of the way we spent the money the last time. Two years out doesn't seem very far out. And if we miss this opportunity, it's going to look a lot worse the next time we come back asking for it. And so I'm, I sometimes to a fault wait to spend money as long as I possibly can. And in this case, I was over looking at the land that they are moving in Fitchburg. And there is a lot going on and it is all in our district. And so I think we have done a great job building the blocks that have gotten us to this point. And I don't ask for money lightly either, but I know how important it is, it is going to be two years from now to have a school for all those kids to go to.
Krista?
I would echo what Barb and Tim said, but these are the things that it comes down to for me. As Tim said, we've spent a lot of time and we've hired someone to, who has experience in doing the research. And as a board, we value research. And the research tells us that our district is growing. Second, we have values about how we educate students in this school district. And part of that is the environment in which our kids are educated. And we know with the growth of students that that environment is going to change if we stay in our current building. So we need more buildings to do that. Third, we listen. We've listened to the community in terms of what they value in education. And we've heard from people about what is needed to continue that and, and buildings are needed. So we've taken a very deliberative approach to this, and I think it's the right decision moving forward. We don't take it lightly, but we are elected to make the decisions and this is the right decision at this time.
Courtney, you're up.
I don't want to repeat what's been said. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, and you were the chair, co-chair of the Growth Task Force too. And so you've been really knee-deep in this.
Right, and, and I guess I would, you know, agree with everything that's been spoken so far and just say that I believe it's the role of the board to be the strategic planner for the entire district. And as part of that, this, this sort of falls into that category. And it makes, it makes sense for all the reasons that everybody has already articulated, and I support it fully.
Thank you, Courtney. Troy?
I agree with all, all of the statements that the four previous board members have, have stated. You know, we're, we're at capacity now and I, I think ahead, if, if we don't add capacity, we're going to be, we're going to be in a, in a difficult situation in, in two years or before. And, and so I, I really believe this is the right thing to do. I have confidence in the growth projections based on what I, what I've seen and witnessed in, in the northern part of our district that's happening today with, with growth and development. So I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with, with this plan. I feel like the, the district has done a really great job in, in the research and planning for this.
Thank you. For those who are watching, you know, we're not unmindful that the board has asked the district to pass two referendums since 2014, and this will be the third time. And those are comments I get about it. And, you know, we're all taxpayers in this district and we're not unmindful of the impact that additional spending has on, on taxes, particularly those on fixed incomes. And just having worked with this board over the last year on the issues of growth and a potential referendum, I can assure folks that we take our position as elected stewards with the utmost seriousness. And we recognize and are greatly appreciative to the taxpayers of the district for the support they've given to, to the district. And the expression of how they value education in our district, that that's important. And so that's, that's important feedback to us. We hope that the taxpayers have seen our process and have recognized that our board's data-driven, number one, and focuses on long-term planning. And so with respect to being data-driven, this was a two-year process that began looking at the issue. We compiled a task force that was comprised of district residents. And over the last two years, we've gotten, and I wanted to emphasize the amount of data that we've gotten. We've got a growth projection report from Roffler's that's over 100-page long, filled with data and growth projections, which has been vetted not only by the consultant and the committee, but by this board and our administrative team. We commissioned through Bray Architects a capacity study to look at our buildings and to determine the capacity in light of that future growth. That's a 60-page data study that's here. The task force then did a study with all that and prepared a task force report to us, which whittled down what they had started at was 12-plus options into four or five options. That was presented to us in February this year, and we spent two to three months walking through those options carefully with our administrative team. We, we reached out to our student representative and she presented a report based upon data that she received from her peers. And we got a student report. We asked our administrative team to work through additional population estimates and, and factor in for us what schools would look like under the options under the report. And we got data regarding, you know, what a school would look like in there to, to go through us. We had how many tasks or focus groups, Brian? 12?
Just over a dozen.
Over a dozen focus groups. And then their report backed us, our community report was reported to us, and we spent time going through that. We've also been looking at future sites for that. And because of the nature of the bargaining and negotiations with that, those have been in close session. But we've got another big binder full of data regarding that, and we're still working on it. And we've been working with our financial planner to look at the best way to structure debt for this over a period of time that's both cost-effective, but also strategizes funding any capital improvements with anticipated growth and, and as close as possible to that growth as we can. So it, it's been a data-heavy process. And I think as you've heard from the board, any objective view, people who work through this data compels us to one conclusion. And there've, there've been, our board members have come together and I think have got consensus on what we need to do. And that is primarily growth needs a response. Okay? And our board has always been inclined to the position that our response is to be measured first and foremost by what is best for our students. The cost of saying no, given the data that we have, means increased class sizes in our existing buildings. It means teachers on carts, potentially. It means consideration of trailers for this. And in a district that has repeatedly expressed to us the value of public education and maintaining the standards that we have, the cost of saying no, in my mind, is unacceptable for that, from an educational standpoint. From an economic standpoint, recognizing that there's a financial cost to taxpayers of this, in my mind, being proactive is the most cost-effective approach. Chasing solutions, once we have the problem or we need to fix it, not only impacts education and the value to our students, but it comes at increased costs by delayed construction costs, increased financing, and, and fixing solutions, fixing problems after the fact. So not only does it make the most sense educationally, but also from a cost standpoint to me. The other thing that we've done, which I think we need to really do a good job of marking, is that this is a two-phase approach to growth. That we're talking about one, one plan right now with a future mapped out for us for the next 15 years with the second phase. And by taking a pause after the first one, we're going to get a sense in terms of what the best way to approach is with the next phase of this. Okay? We have a pretty good idea where that's going, but it's not, it's, it's good planning in my mind to take a pause and to work off of that. So that makes sense. You know, I was asked a question last year, what I was most proud of, when I was running for reelection, what I was most proud of the district. And I said, you know, we should be proud of collectively as to the quality that this district is or has, you know? That means a community that supports our schools. Everybody's engaged in terms of one goal, and that's education for, for our students. And, and based on two years of study and the data before me and our collective commitment to public education, I don't have any reservations at all about going out to the public with this referendum and to, to hard-sell it. Because it's the, it's the right thing and in my mind, the only thing to do. So I'm going to be voting yes on that. Dan, we're at the point right now where the motion on the table is to approve the initial resolution authorizing the general obligation bonds in the amount of 44,900. Okay?
Thanks, and I apologize for being late.
All right, anybody else? I went on, but it's my prerogative as president and having been through a number of these. I, I think we should be really proud of a board, of the amount of work that's gone into this. And not only the amount of work, but the collaborative nature of this work. This represents the work product of constituents in our district, our teachers, our administrators and the board, and then our consultants. And so this is really good stuff. So with that, would you call the roll?
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Mr. Pankratz?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, that motion carries. The second motion we need to consider is the resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $2,118,487 for recurring purposes, consistent with the language that's in the resolution in your packet and the information that was shared earlier in this meeting. I'll need a motion to approve that resolution. Mr. Lebrun with the motion. Is there a second? Ms. Feeney with the second. Katie, do you have that one down, the motion?
Yes.
We're good with that?
Yep.
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would you call the roll?
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Yeah.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Pankratz?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, that motion carries by unanimous vote. The next motion before us is a resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of the initial resolution which we passed, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $44,900,000. And the resolution we just passed, authorizing the district budget to exceed the revenue limit by $2,118,487 for recurring purposes.
I move that we approve the referendum election or do what's needed to get the referendum on ballot.
The motion is to approve that resolution. Is there a second? And that's by Dan? Mr. Pankratz with the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Heights, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Pankratz?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. The next motion and the last one is the declaration to declare official intent to reimburse expenditures from the reimbursement of borrowing. This was the one we set over from the last meeting, pending insertion of the amount of the referendum. That is now. That has now been inserted into section two. And I note that there's a typo on two, two i's in section, so we'll clarify that. But it's forty-four million, nine hundred thousand dollars in that. And we discussed that at the last meeting, so I need, we need a motion to approve that.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yep.
Thank you. Why are we using the total forty-four million? It seems to me that it would be likely that we would know long before we spent that much and needed to get reimbursed that much before it was, we had actually spent it. Do you, do you see what I'm saying?
I, I do. The resolution's really defining the borrowing. It's not defining how much you're going to get reimbursed. All you're doing is defining that we're, this, that, that borrowing, the forty-four point nine million dollar borrowing, we will have some expenses ahead of time. And this allows us to get reimbursed for them. It's, it's not really related to the, we're not going to ask for forty-four point nine million dollars in reimbursement. All we're doing is that, that's referring to the borrowing that's going to happen in the future.
Is there something in here that says how much we can borrow?
There isn't actually. Well, I mean, totally, we're borrowing the forty point nine million dollars. But I guess the word would be kind of advancing spending. There is nothing that refers to that, that amount. We could do the full forty-four, nine, but we definitely have a cash flow problem.
Right, and, and it would, the, those expenditures would be included in the, what we had talked about would be the soft costs.
Right, okay.
Great, thanks, Dan. Any other questions? So I need a motion to approve that resolution. Ms. Feeny with the motion and the second? Dan Kraus with the second? Any further discussion? Katie, you got that resolution and the motion? Would you call the roll?
Ms. Feeny?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Yeah.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Pankrats?
Yes.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, that motion also carries unanimous voice vote.
Mr. President, I just, just to comment on that, I would hope that we would spend much less than a million dollars before we figured out whether this was going to pass in the, in the referendum. And I just would like, I, I'm seeing heads nod, so I'm, from the administration, so I'm pretty confident that, that we're not going to just go all out as though we're assuming that it's going to pass without some caution.
Yeah, we're, we're getting estimates on those things right now. We actually had the discussion with the architect to say, okay, what's the cash flow outlay? Just because of the speed that we're doing this process, if we're going to open it in 2020, we had to do some of the, the design work upfront. So it probably will be in six figures, but it's not going to approach seven figures by any stretch of the imagination.
The future agenda, we'll need to have a meeting before our next regular meeting to choose one of the PMA options before us. And so what we're going to do is confer with PMA about Michelle's availability to come and, and then the board members as well, okay, for that purpose. We will get some dates and Katie will be sending out a doodle probably in the next day or so, as soon as we get two, three options from Michelle. Great, and then our next regular, our next meeting is going to be not until August 20th because we've got conflicts on the sixth and the 13th, so we're going to be on the 20th. We had talked about that a little bit at the last meeting. Any issues there that we know of offhand?
I had mentioned that I won't be able to make it.
Right. Not sure. Okay. Okay. I will confer with Brian, given that we've got two board members who won't be there. So we'll talk. But we're for sure not meeting on the sixth and the 13th, okay? And we've got other, other meetings coming up anyway. Not like we won't be meeting in the capacity of a school board, okay? Good. Check out. Courtney, I'll check out with you first.
Sorry I couldn't be there, but thank you for allowing me to call and participate long distance. I think it was a, a very good decision that we made tonight in the interest of our district and our students, so thanks again.
And you have the board's best wishes. Hope things move along satisfactorily down there.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, we're going to end your call, okay?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Bye.
Good night, bye.
Barb, anything? Tim? Krista?
I just have one thing, just wanted to have the board. We just finished for Friends of Oregon School District our 2017-18 year review in terms of how this partnership has really grown with the school and the community in terms of supporting our students in need so they are really able to engage in their learning. And then just wanted to announce that on Tuesday, July 31st, we're going to actually have an open annual meeting here in the Innovation Center at 7:30 to talk about our programs and then some exciting new initiatives that we're launching for 2018, 2019 school year. So if you can make it, that would be great.
Great. Troy? Dan? Thank you, everyone, board members, for really all the hard work that you have done over the last couple of years on this significant issue. Thank you to the administrators for walking us through this and, and your input and wisdom. And for our friends from Findorf and Bray, thank you for your continued expertise and support of our district. And it's now on to talking with the district taxpayers for purposes of securing a successful referendum. Gina will be getting out to us our, what we can do as board members time. And onward we go, so I'll need one motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, we are adjourned, thanks, everyone.